All right. Hello. Today, I come to speak as an individual and not a representation of any of the organizations that I am associated with. I come to talk as Nicole Ayala Kungochee. I am a member, very involved in our community. I am a youth. I am a student. I am also a child born to immigrant parents. My parents are from the country of Peru, and it is a beautiful country and rich in history, rich in culture, but also in corruption and violence. And that is the reason we are here in the United States of America, a country that prides itself on being free, a country that prides itself on being for everyone. And that is why I am here, just to remind you all of the people that you are serving. You are serving Oregonians. You are serving people who live in Hillsborough, and that includes Hispanic people, that includes Asian people, that includes African Americans, that includes every single person that is here in the room and those beyond that are not able to be here in person. And I want to thank you for all that you've done thus far to maintain our city aligned with the purposes of being a diverse city, of being a city that is to protect its citizens, to protect those that are maybe undocumented, and to protect the safety and the well-being of everyone who calls Hillsborough a home. So, thank you for that. Thank you for maintaining our city to be a sanctuary city. I do urge you to continue to progress and to continue working towards what we can do more. There is no limits. And yes, there are legal limits. However, we can continue to always push those because it is obvious that there are other groups of people who are pushing against us. And I didn't really come with a plan, but just with the idea that I want to represent my people. I want to represent my voice. And como hispana, como hija de inmigrantes, siento mucho miedo y orgullo al mismo tiempo. Miedo por lo que está ahorita nuestra comunidad enfrentando. La pena que me da a ver que familias ahorita están sufriendo con miedo de ir a comprar, de ir a lavar la ropa, y de mi propia familia. Pero también vino con orgullo de ver que mi comunidad es tan unida, que ver que nuestros representantes aquí en la ciudad están tan unidos para ayudarnos a nosotros, para unirnos a nosotros. Y a eso les doy muchas, muchas gracias. Pero, por favor, continúen, continúen con valentía, continúen con unidad de sus voces de ustedes y de nuestras voces de la comunidad. Muchas gracias por oírnos y muchas gracias por estar aquí hoy día. Thank you.
Josefina Flores, you're next. But hold up one second. William S., please come up. Gracias, Nicole. So, William S. is coming up. Josefina, welcome. You have three minutes.
Thank you for that. I'm here in Washington County.
Oh, Josefina, do you mind pressing the middle button on the console? And when it turns green, you are on. Do you mind restarting the three minutes?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for listening to me, listen for everybody. So, I live here for more than thirty years in Washington County. Y realmente, ahorita nuestra comunidad necesita nuestro apoyo para nuestros niños, nuestros jóvenes. Todos nuestros niños están mal. Todos nuestros jóvenes están mal. De niños están pasando ya ser, de jóvenes están pasando a ser adultos, agarrando responsabilidades de los, de que están tratando de ayudar a sus papás. Entonces, ¿cómo podemos hacer para ayudar a nuestra comunidad? Todos estamos estresados, estamos mal, estamos mal. ¿Cómo nos van a ayudar ustedes como nuestros representantes de la comunidad a nuestra gente? Ustedes están ahí, prometieron ayudar a nuestra gente. ¿Cómo lo van a hacer? ¿Qué van a hacer? Ahorita nuestras familias están sufriendo, nuestros niños están sufriendo, nuestros jóvenes están pasando a ser adultos, están dejando las escuelas por ayudar a sus papás. Nuestros niños están preguntando dónde están sus papás. Ya no llegan a casa. Ellos no entienden ahorita. Piensan que mañana van a venir, pero no vienen. Por favor, ayuden a nuestra comunidad, a nuestros niños, a nuestros jóvenes, a las personas que están sufriendo y están pasando por todo esto. Todos estamos pasando. No conocemos aquel que ya están agarrando. Pero como comunidad nos duele a que estén sufriendo tanto y no podemos ayudarlos. ¿Cómo nos van a ayudar a ustedes? Ustedes están ahí para representarnos, para ayudarnos. Por favor, ayúdenos. Si no de nada sirve todo esto. Nosotros estamos trabajando, ayudando a nuestra comunidad, y como acaba de decir la muchacha, nos estamos uniendo. Pero sin su ayuda, no podemos hacer nada. Cada condado, cada estado, cada lugar, ayuden a nuestra gente, por favor. Ayúdenos a nosotros. Ustedes no saben cuánto, cuánto están sufriendo. Ustedes lo miran aquí, otras gentes lo miran acá, pero nosotros lo estamos viviendo y lo estamos sintiendo y lo estamos mirando. No es lo mismo estar allá que estar acá. Por favor, solo yo vine a pedirles para nuestra comunidad. Y muchas gracias por escucharlos. Nada de lo que escribí les dije, nada de lo que estuve ahí. Les estoy diciendo lo que yo estoy sintiendo, lo que yo estoy mirando. Por favor, yo sé que ya se acabó mi tiempo.
Gracias, Josefina.
Pero tomen nuestra opinión.
Gracias, Josefina. William, you're next, but please hold on for a moment. The next person after William is Phil Pelkin. Phil Pelkin is next. Come on up. And after Phil Pelkin is Michael Peterson. Michael, you're on deck. William, you have, the mic is already on, and you have three minutes.
Oh, cool. Okay. Hey, everyone. My name is William. I live on Second Jackson, pretty close by. I'm a school bus driver for Hillsborough School District and a member of the Hillsborough Classified Union, but I'm speaking for myself today. I moved here about a few months ago, but already feel at home and have been welcomed by my neighbors, the schools, and the coworkers. So, this is the third meeting I've been to that allowed public comments. At this point, I don't think there's anything else we can tell you between our public comments, the news, and social media. You're all aware that the mass agents are kidnapping people off the street. And as far as I can tell, you've opened up some money to help Latino businesses and offered thoughts and prayers. And I missed the work section earlier today, but was able to take a look at the PowerPoint, and I'm not impressed. And it's frustrating that you're asking us to lower our expectations, telling us to wait when we really can't. A little bit of background on ICE. ICE was formed in 2003 and expanded under Republican and Democratic presidents. And we can absolutely and should hate this current administration, but we can't let Obama, Biden, or the Democrats off the hook. ICE has been operating for over twenty years, and last year, 2024, ICE has deported over 200,000 people. And it's used by our government to keep people afraid. And when they're afraid, they accept lower wages, longer working hours, and are too scared to criticize the government. We have to understand that our government isn't here to protect us. The ICE agents are doing what they do because they know they're not going to be stopped by you guys. If we replaced every city councillor today, the results would be the same, which means I need to talk to the people who have the power to stop ICE, which is everyone out here, everyone watching, because they've stopped ICE detentions. You haven't stopped ICE detentions. And if ICE came through those doors right now, I don't trust you to stop them. I would rely on everyone out here, with the signs, making noise, with the whistles. They will know what phone numbers to call. They know friends. They know how to get food to each other's houses. They're doing the work. And when I was driving my school bus, we passed a cop car, and then all the kids said, "Migra, migra," and then went quiet. And that, like, the silence broke my heart. And I can't thank you. I can't look at you and thank you because you haven't done enough. You haven't started doing anything. And I don't know what else there is to say. Like, there's a line in Hillsborough. On one side is the city council, the police, their lawyers, and ICE. And on the other side are the people, and I'm standing on the side of the people, the teachers, the construction workers, the previous speakers. I'm standing with them. And so, that's the question we have to ask. Which side are we on?
Phil Pelkin, you're next. Michael Peterson, you can come up to the podium. Phil, you have three minutes.
Thank you for introducing this resolution.
Please press the button so we can hear you.
Thank you. Thank you for introducing this resolution. My name is Phil Pelkey. I've lived here, also just moved here in May. Other speakers at this meeting have described people being disappeared off the street. I can say from my own experience, just taking a walk around the park within a block of where I lived, I've seen that myself. This emergency is here. So, thank you for doing what we can right now. The emergency is here, and so thank you for acknowledging that. I expect many others in this room have seen that as well. The status quo is hurting our community. This resolution at least helps mitigate that damage. So, thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Michael, you're next. The next person up is Adrian Smith. Adrian Smith, you can come up to the podium, to the desk here. And then after Adrian Smith is Laney. Laney, you're on deck. Okay, Michael, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Beach and the city council. I come here today as a concerned citizen. I see a government that has gotten out of control. They're not respecting the rights that we have as Americans, whether we are citizens or not. Those rights extend to everybody, as well they should. If they are able to violate the rights of our Fourth Amendment, they're able to violate it for everybody, from the least of us to the greatest of us. It doesn't matter. If they can violate it for one, they can violate it for it all. I've seen them operate, ICE personally, in several instances. They operate with extreme violence, in large numbers, with assault rifles. Every single abduction that I've seen, they've been able to do it in under two minutes. And at that point in time, there's just, those of us who are observing it, we're just left to pick up the pieces. And one of the things that I would ask is that we start thinking creatively about how do we connect those families to their loved one and legal counsel, so that way they can have a fighting chance. Because today, there's just a car left in the middle of the road, and sometimes there's not a name attached to it. Sometimes it's locked, and we can't get in and see what the registration is, and at least try that. And so, and we're dealing with a population who's very fearful of the police right now and can't differentiate between police number one and police number two. And so, I ask that, one, that we look at ways to work with community-based organizations to help them quickly reconnect and notify families that ICE has taken their loved ones, so it's not just somebody who's just been disappeared. And secondly, in this time of fear, we need to be very careful about our words and our communication. And as you've come aware, a memo that was sent out under one context was read in our current context, where we are now seeing how violent and how out of control this agency is. And so, I fear that all the work that our police department has done after the Black Lives Matter movement in terms of reaching out to community members and working on ways to better integrate themselves with the community, I fear that all that work has been lost. And so, I ask that we redouble those efforts now in today's environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Adrian, you're next, but Laney can come up to the desk here. And then the next person on deck is Kimberly Fabian Martinez. Adrian, welcome. You have three minutes.
My name is Adrian Smith. I am a school councillor at an elementary school in Hillsborough School District. Speaking in front of all these people is terrifying, but I see the brave folks of this community get up and go to work, drop off and pick up their children at school, leave their homes to get food for their families, all while knowing that masked racist secret police could be lurking down the street to racially profile and ultimately kidnap them without cause, ripping them from their loved ones. Daily, I see the fear in our children's faces, the fear in their families' faces, all while knowing that I can't tell them everything will be okay. We, as educators, are transporting our students to and from schools in various ways, as taking the risk of being at their children's school has gotten multiple Hillsborough parents snatched right from their cars while their children watched. We, as educators, are creating safe spaces for folks to get groceries and doing grocery shopping for families, as ICE is hiding in grocery store parking lots. We, as educators, are lining streets at arrival and dismissal, surveilling alleyways and dead-end streets, as this is where ICE lies in wait. We, as educators, are helping families to write plans for their children's care if they are kidnapped while their babies are at school. What are you, as our community leaders, doing? Currently, we are a sanctuary city in name only. This title did not protect our community members, and it does not erase the last six weeks of nonstop terror that our community members have and are experiencing at the behest of our racist administration, where a Gestapo is taking orders from a 34-time convicted felon. Continuing to allow these domestic terrorists free rein in our community must stop, and I implore you to get creative in implementing measures to protect the immigrants in our community. Unprecedented times call for innovative thinking, not complicity. You have the power to make it harder for these goons to kidnap our community members by requiring them to identify themselves, prohibiting them from having their faces covered, and by ensuring that our local police department is not working with them. Sending memos to Hillsborough city employees restricting them from using their position to warn community members or deterring them from filming these kidnappings for six weeks was a mistake. These Gestapo members need to be on record, as there will be a day of reckoning. Hillsborough can create policies to ensure that we are on the right side of history. Without meaningful action, this leadership body is nothing but a bystander to these atrocities against humanity happening in our diverse community. All will be held accountable for their actions in time. Do not co-mingle passively with this Gestapo organization. Your complicity is dangerous.
Kimberly Fabian Martinez, you can come up. And Laney, is that you?
Yes.
Great. Just hold on one second. On deck, we have Melina McLaughlin. Melina McLaughlin, you're on deck. Laney, please go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Laney, and I'm a resident of Hillsborough for the last 25 years, and I'm an immigrant. But I have one special power that most immigrants around here don't have. I'm white, so I don't fear ICE. I'm out on those streets patrolling my kids' schools. I've watched six abductions. I've watched the Hillsborough PD stand by and do nothing as a woman was screaming from her car, "I'm a citizen. I was born in Portland." And he, you know what he did? He went like this. He shrugged his shoulders. He could have stopped that because that ICE car, you guys wanted solutions? That ICE car had only one plate. It had no registration tags. And I personally photographed that vehicle more than once on the license plate on different vehicles. He could have stopped that right then and there. That vehicle was breaking state law. Oregon has laws. Hillsborough has laws. City council has control over Hillsborough PD on how and when they should be enforcing that stuff. What are you guys doing? Except putting out memos telling staff not to record. Oh, and you only retracted the "do not record." You did not retract "don't tell people information." So, what information about ICE are you guys withholding? What are you guys doing? That's what I would like to know. And you want solutions, but you guys aren't enforcing the solutions, like police need to police. And you guys need to stop withholding information. Thank you.
Kimberly, you're next. Melina McLaughlin, thanks for coming up. And Anastasia Hernandez-Vazquez, you're on deck. Kimberly, you have three minutes. Go right ahead.
My name is Kimberly, and as a family, as my parents, as immigrants, it's very hard to go out because if we can't go out because it's very dangerous to go out. We can't even go get our groceries or go shopping. It's very hard for us to go out. And it's very hard for my mom to take me to school because she is nervous that ICE is going to pull us over because ICE has been at our school and on the street at the school I go to. It's just very dangerous, and I don't like how it's so unsafe outside. And I want to go outside, but I can't. I want to go hang out with my friends, but I can't because I don't have a ride there because my parents are too scared. I'm very nervous that my parents are taken away, but at least I still have them. I don't want my parents to be taken away because I am still a child. I still want to have a family with them. And it's very scary because every day, my parents have been coming home, been so scared and crying. And I haven't been crying as much, but lately I have. Because this morning, like, at 1:40, one of my family members had been deported. They have been detained, and we don't know where they're at right now, but they have been detained. And like, a few weeks before, another family member has been detained because of ICE, because they were working. But one of them literally said that they were a US citizen, but they still take them. Either way, they're a US citizen, they still take them. They don't care. They racially profile you. Like, I can get deported because my hair, my skin color, if I speak Spanish, because I am a Latina. And they don't care if, like, you're a US citizen. Like, I can still be taken away because I was born here in Oregon, but they don't care. They still take you, and like, it's very dangerous. And every time I want to go out, like, I have to go to school, my parents always have to check the ICE app because it's very dangerous to go out. Thank you for your time.
Melina, you're next. Anastasia Hernandez-Vazquez, you can come up. And the person on deck is Erica Villa. Melina, go right ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. So, I have lived in Hillsborough all of my life, and I went to school here, and I also work in Hillsborough. I am not here speaking for myself. I'm here speaking for my family, my family who is not able to come and speak for themselves. The fear that they have, day in and day out, is, it's just so overwhelming. I had a family member tell me this weekend that they are done, that they want to leave, they don't want to be here anymore, that the stress is too much, and they're crying to me, that they don't want to be here. They are done with this. I also talked to somebody that their spouse was taken, and they were taken to Tacoma. And they were in a facility for two weeks. Those two weeks, they had no water, no food that was given to them, no food that was warmed up for them, no clean clothes, no shower. Imagine not taking a shower, being able to clean yourself for two weeks. Can you imagine that? Their spouse could not take it anymore, and they signed papers to self-deport. And when they signed those papers to self-deport, they got an applause, an applause, because of how they just couldn't take it anymore, to be, just being treated like an animal. This is not, these stories that we're hearing, these are not stories of hero stories, or stories that are like, wow, they're so brave and this and that. This is a result of a government that is taking away rights and putting people in horrendous situations. I, please do not forget that, that this is not, oh, wow, our community is so strong and this and that. Yes, we are strong, but we should not be having to go through this at all. Nobody. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Villa, you can come up to the desk on the left-hand side of the room. Barry Johnson Smith, you're on deck. And Anastasia, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Price, councillors, and community of Hillsborough for the opportunity to speak my truths. I want to start by saying Hitler didn't start with camps. He started with "Make America, or Make Germany Great Again" slogans, banning books, bullying the press, blaming immigrants, turning neighbors into enemies, gutting the arts, fear mongering about outsiders, and demonizing teachers. Sounds like what we're going through now in this country. I am the wife of an immigrant, the mother of biracial children, the mother of an army soldier who served four years in the Marines prior to going to the Army. My children are young adults in this community who live in fear every day for their father's well-being, their family's well-being, and their community's well-being. I'm a descendant of immigrants who was brought to this country due to the Nazis and their infiltration into my country. We lived in Germany. We moved to Russia. We went to Ukraine. We came to the United States to be sent to North Dakota, the Badlands. But we're still here. I want to say that the United States is not America. America includes Canada, Mexico, numerous other countries in Central America, the Caribbean, Costa Rica, Cuba, Haiti, and Jamaica. So, these are American people. We have the ability to fight this. The threat is real. The fear is real. The government-sponsored domestic terrorism is real. We deserve better for our children, for our families. We don't need these goons breaking windows, pulling family members out of cars in front of children, and sometimes leaving children orphaned and having to figure out what's next with no parents. The last time that this man was in power, how many children disappeared under his watch? How many parents lost children and still haven't figured out what happened to them after all these years? Might I say that I heard that ICE is the third highest funded in the world, only under the United States military and Chinese military? That's terrifying. They're not the military. They're a small government agency that should not have the funding like they have. I have an inquiry. What would it mean if Hillsborough could support our community and withdraw from federal funding? Could we do it? Would our citizens be able to survive without having the feds in here? Would our citizens be better off without having these goons in our streets taking our people? So, I just want to go ahead and say that I've read the Constitution. I love history, and what's happening is not constitutional and should not be happening in this country under the Constitution. We need to do something. We need to be that city who stands up and shows the rest.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up, Barry. Erica, you are next, but hold up. Sean Thomas, you are on deck. Sean Thomas. Okay, Erica, you have three minutes.
Hello, I am Erica. I was born in Salem, Oregon. Today, I came from Salem, and I wanted to do my testimony. I was one of the incident or victims that happened last week on Tuesday around nine in the morning, where I was following what I believe was an ICE agent car. And my thoughts now are that they were bounty hunters. They never showed their badge or identifications. I was following for about 10 minutes, and I was asking them if they could roll down their window, if they could show ID or badge, if they could identify themselves. I just wanted to know why they were in town, why are they there arresting people that are not criminals, people that have no records? I know that coming from another country is only a civil offense, is not a criminal crime. So, my day on Tuesday happened that a lot of people were saying, you know, hey, do the migra watch. There's a lot of ICE things happening, you know? So, I started following them. I guess for some, it was called a persecution. For me, I was doing the right thing for my people, for my community. And when we stopped at a red light, I basically pulled down the window and I asked them, you know, if you are one of them, could you identify yourself? Could you show me your, you know, your cover face, your arm, your rifle? And eventually, the guy did come out, you know? We were at a stoplight. He comes out, he brings out his rifle, his R-15, and he does not identify himself. At this time, my car was already in park. It had the emergency lights on, and I left the keys inside just in case I had to, you know, fly the scene or anything. Their response at the statement was that my car was on drive the whole time, that the reason why they put the rifle, or pointed the rifle at me was for self-defense, because they felt intimidated. And I am a, you know, 5'3" girl, weighing 150. There was two guys. And I am a, you know, five-three girl, waiting 150. There was two guys. How did I intimidate two guys? That I was only recording and asking them questions. So I at this point, I don't know who they are, what they want. And I checked their plates. Their plates don't have any record, they have no DMV record. So my my question is to Oregon is why are they letting bounty hunters? For me, that's what they are. Why are they letting them stay here in town, doing all this criminal activity for me? Because for me, a federal agent shouldn't have a rifle and they shouldn't be pointing a rifle at me. And I feel that we as people have to advocate and talk to our people. Quería decirles que mi nombre es Erica Villa, estoy aquí para la comunidad, estoy aquí para todos ustedes, para que entiendan y sepan que todos podemos trabajar, todos tenemos una voz, todos tenemos el derecho de seguir a estas personas incubiertas que no son a veces agentes de inmigración y quiero que sepan que estamos para ustedes. Eh, como una muchacha nacida aquí, todos tenemos voz y no quiero que se intimiden, que estamos todos juntos y que el pueblo junto jamás será vencido y hoy venimos a ser la portavoz de toda la comunidad. Estamos aquí por ustedes y vamos a seguir luchando por ustedes. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Uh, Barry, you have three minutes, but hold tight. Sean Thomas, you are up next. Come on up to the table, the desk on the left-hand side of the room. And then Alex Sedeteno, Alex Sedeteno is on deck. Barry, you have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, Council. I have a couple items to share with you and with our community members tonight. Yesterday, I organized an event with other concerned residents from Portland, Salem, Hillsborough and Forest Grove to visit the state Capitol. Uh, our goal was to share our experience with the harm ICE is causing in our communities and to ask the state to work on legislation to address this issue. For everyone who came with me yesterday, they took time out of their busy schedule to attend. It was their first time visiting the Capitol and their first time engaging directly with legislators. Some of them are here in the room today. I want to congratulate them and recognize their courage in taking that step. From our conversations, we learned that the state is already working on several bills related to the concerns we raised about ICE activity. One proposal will require law enforcement officers to unmask and identify themselves so community members can clearly recognize what agency is present at a scene. Another, uh, the one I have a copy right here called Protect Your Door Act, which is a draft of from Representative Leslie Munoz's office, uh, would allow private citizens to sue federal agents who enter their property without proper identification or a warrant, including for any damage caused during such actions. Um, I plan to get a list of immigrant-related bills that will be on the session for next year, so anyone interested in them just let me know. I spoke with one legislator who's working on these bills and he told me he is trying to stretch the boundaries of the law to address the situation. That is exactly what we are asking from you as well. We need you to stretch the boundaries of what's possible to protect and support community members impacted by ICE. Historically, we have seen how loopholes and policy creativity have been used to circumvent civil rights laws, enable people to be oppressed and exploited, so why can't we apply the same level of creativity to protect our people and our rights? The resolution is a good first step in that direction. Before I close, I want to offer some feedback on the grant you posted last week for the CBOs to support immigrants. Several people came to me expressing concern about the language used and some CBOs were discouraged from applying because of it. I know from my experience working in government, I understand why you framed it the way you did and as well as I knew how to talk to Marcus to get clarification, but many others do not. This highlights a broader issue of community engagement, specifically the need to improve how you communicate with the public so people can better understand the decisions you make and why you write the documentation for what you do. I am more than willing to help you and with that work, if you'd like my support, most of y'all know me, so feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Uh, Sean Thomas, you're next. Please hold tight. And then Alex Sedeteno. Are you Alex? Come on up. You can come up on the right-hand side desk. And then Erin Palmer, you are on deck. Sean, you have three minutes.
Hello. Council members, thank you for the time to share my thoughts, commentary and perspective with our wider community. Regarding the calls for action outlined in the recent emergency declaration, uh, thank you for adopting, by the way. Uh, I do want to believe that something positive will manifest from it. Uh, hearing the options presented intend to follow all applicable laws strongly contrasts with these external forces operating here that do not follow the law themselves. Makes me ask, why are we burdened with remaining the responsible adults in the room? So we're clear on this, we're expected to legally combat these forces when our opposition openly disregards our laws and our rights with seemingly relished disdain. Hearing that the council recognizes the abuse our community members are enduring and seeing the wording that condemns it, I find myself asking, what is the action that can actually be taken here? Will any be action, uh, will any action be taken? How is this gonna be enforced and how will we feel protected? If these masked gangs of violent abductors hunting our friends and family will continue to be a presence in our community, then it makes me wonder what our options are. We're told not to engage. In fact, we're very likely to be labeled terrorists for documenting the illegal actions of ICE. So what can we as a community do? And we call the police? Well, we're actually told that the police forces will not respond to those calls. So now what? Uh, make a decision to attend a council meeting for the first time in my life and voice my opinion. And now the abductions continue and the fear persists. We need to see strength and courage from our leaders. We need to see significant advancements of proactive policies that defend and protect our citizens when we're feeling powerless as individuals. And a final thought and echoing a suggestion that some have shared here, since these guys are out here in our neighborhoods acting in an illegal capacity, incoordinated efforts to terrorize and kidnap our neighbors, our police should probably act accordingly and enforce all applicable laws and treat them as the criminal gangs they are and start actively arresting them to immediately get them off of our streets. It's not a perfect fix, but it is better than doing nothing. Thank you to everyone here for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Uh, Erin Palmer, you can come up. And I'll just put a reminder at the last meeting, uh, if you agreed with what somebody was saying, um, I encourage you to snap so we can still hear what they're saying. If you clap, then we can't hear what they're saying, so. Uh, encourage if you wanna support, that's great, but if you snap, then we can still hear the testimony. Okay, Alex, uh, you have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Alex Sedeteno. And first of all, thank you, uh, Mayor Pace for pronouncing that right. Um, because as someone with that last name, I do come here. Uh, most of you can tell that that name isn't of a white or European descent. And I just wanna start off first by saying, I was here years ago when when I was a kid, um, when the city of Hillsborough did agree and put into place that this would be a sanctuary city. And at that time, I did believe that that would help us. I do think it adds at some capacity. But as I'm seeing today in our community, I don't believe that that's being acknowledged. I don't think that's being upheld because the truth is that our community, members of our community, people we see every day are being taken, are being, their rights are being violated. So I think what I was in the work session, I believe what you uh, all mentioned are great first steps, but I believe that's what they are, first steps, and that more needs to be done. I think working with other communities and cities, such as the ones that are around us, such as Forest Grove, Cornelius Beaverton, needs to be done because as you can see, when our community shows up, things happen. People make things happen. And so if we have more people within our state of Oregon working together, then that's when real change is seen. And one other thing that I wanna touch on is that the people here who are speaking up for the people who are not here, that is something that you should also see, is that people with skin like mine, people who have are darker shades, they're afraid to step out of their house. They're afraid to show up here, to advocate for themselves. That's why we have all these people advocating for them. And I also think that another point to be made is that the keeping the community informed. I have, where I work, we have the know your rights cards, the red cards. When they come in, people say, I didn't, I don't, I didn't know you guys had these. I didn't know, like, my rights. Basically, they don't know their rights. People need to know their rights and I believe that you as the council and the city should also, you know, let people know that you're standing with them. Um, and I'll use these last 10 seconds to say that, I'll say this in Spanish. And I need you guys to stand up for us.
Gracias, Alex. Erin, you're up next. Hold tight. Simone Campbell, if you could come up to the desk on the right-hand side of the room. Simone Campbell. And then Emily Cordo, you are on deck. Erin, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, good evening. My name is Erin Palmer and I am a Hillsborough resident and a business owner. And I'm here tonight because the city is failing to turn words into action when it comes to protecting our community. My dear friend Victor Cruz was illegally and wrongfully detained by ICE for 25 days. And do you know who was doing the work to save him? His daughter at Siri, myself and Councilor Sinclair, every day for 25 days. We are not lawyers and we are not crisis professionals and yet we were sent out like lambs to the slaughter as we fought against a federal agency for Victor's freedom and for the safety of all of Hillsborough. And it was our relentless effort, not the city's. It was our efforts that engaged Congresswoman Bonamici, that brought media attention and that finally helped free Victor. We did the heavy lifting and we protected Victor, but the city did not protect us and you are not protecting the rest of the community. Our Latino neighbors are being terrorized and families are being dismantled. Meanwhile, our local businesses are collapsing. Many are down by half or more. The joy, the life, the spirit of Hillsborough, it's draining out of our town. And let me ask you this. Any parents here? Any parents here tonight? I have received phone calls from three different women that I have never met who saw me on the news and asked me if in the event that ICE detains them, if I would take their children. How dare we be in this situation? Think about that, really think about that. Mothers in this city are so terrified of being separated from their children that they are looking for backup plans with strangers because their friends and family look like them and therefore they don't feel safe there either. Here's another devastating part. All of these mothers have legal status. One is a naturalized citizen, another has protected status, but we know that is not enough to guarantee their safety. It didn't protect Victor. And when we think about when else in history mothers have sent their children to live with with strangers to keep them safe, you know when that was? It was in Nazi Germany with the Kinder Transport in the 1930s. And that's the level of fear we have in Hillsborough in 2025. You cannot continue to call yourselves leaders while the residents of the city are doing the work that you are unwilling to do. We are fighting for each other, we are protecting our community and what I see too many people doing is having an unwillingness to be uncomfortable. Silence is not neutrality. Silence is complicity. And when you do nothing, you are choosing harm. Get brave, get uncomfortable and get to work for Victor, for our families and for all of Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Uh, Simone, you are next. Um, Emily Cordo, is that you? All right, thank you. And then, uh, Jodi Artega, uh, you are on deck. Jodi Artega. Um, Simone, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Simone Campbell and I'm a resident here in Hillsborough for the last five years. My partner and I own a home in Old Orenco. Um, I'm almost dumbfounded. I don't know what to say because I was the last person that was speaking. I just kinda wanted to say, yeah, what's that lady said? You know, my family goes back in this country to the early colonizers, okay? I'm from New York originally. My father helped build the Trade Towers. My brother watched them come down. His nephew, I mean, his son, my nephew, built them back up. To say I'm an American patriot is an understatement. But I am no more American than any brown person that is in this room, any brown person that is afraid to be in this room. For every empty seat that is in this room. Uh, Mayor, I took your advice from your TikTok, from your TikToks or your Facebook and I went to the local Mercado today.
Thank you.
Did a bunch of shopping, uh, walked around looking for someone to help me know what to buy, um, looking to make contact with people. So you can say, you see me, right? You see me wanting to help you, you see me wanting to be an ally. I'm trying. And they're looking at me like they, yeah, get to buying stuff, lady. Your white privilege demands that you be here and stand for me, stand next to me, stand in front of me if I need you to. So then I took all of that stuff and I went down to one of the little free pantry fridges that one of our community members, who's very well-known, puts out in front of her house. And I stuffed it in there for the people that can't get out to the stores. And now I'm worried about, well, what about the people going to that refrigerator? What are they gonna do if they know that someone's watching them? So now I go, okay, I bet I can deliver some groceries. We need to do more. I'm from New Jersey originally and, you know, I gotta say, we would not be taking some of the shit that we are seeing happening here. We would not be. My ancestors demand more of me. Your ancestors demand more of you. I do the things I should do. I put a free library out in front of my house. I now convert it to a pantry. I do the things that I can do to help out. I vote the way I need to vote. So when I lay my head down at night, I can feel better about myself. Bullshit. I demand more of myself and everyone else because it is the least I can do as an American. This dream we've promised people, this this fantasy that we've promised people. We will stand you up, but we will not stand next to you or behind you when it, when it. Where is the good trouble that we are supposed to get into? I'm calling you to the line, all of you up here. Stand to the line and get in some good trouble. You wanna be safe? No one's safe. That's the truth.
Thank you, Simone. Jodi Artega. Jodi, are you coming up? Great, okay. And then Val Bakma, Val Bakma, you are on deck. And Emily, you have three minutes.
Um, thank you. My name is Emily Cordo and I work and live in Hillsborough. And, um, I come from a family that includes immigrants. My family came from Italy and I happen to look like the Italian side of my family. Um, and one of the consequences of that is that my entire life I've been mistaken for being Latina. Uh, and that has just as often been Latino and Latino folks who've been mistaking me, so I take it as a compliment. Uh, but it is now something that causes me a great deal of fear. I'm afraid to be in my own community because I could be mistaken for being Latino and therefore a target by a bunch of state-sponsored terrorist thugs who don't really care who I actually am or who any of these people that they're attacking actually are. Um, a couple of weeks ago, my neighbor's uh, son came to my front door and said, um, I, uh, my lift didn't show up to get to work and, um, you know, if I'm late for work one more time, I'm gonna get fired. He's Latino. And obviously I wanted to help him out. He, you know, I want him to succeed. He's my neighbor. But I was afraid. Uh, you know, I don't know what his immigration status is. I don't know what's gonna happen to me if I'm driving down the road with somebody in my car who may or may not be a US citizen. But of course I gave him the ride because we have to take risks when we're faced with this kind of danger. And, um, I'm really happy to see this resolution. I'm happy to hear about the other changes that are being made in terms of allowing the employees to film ICE. But it's not enough. This is this is defense and we need to play offense. The people who are doing this, uh, you know, they they don't care what the laws are. They're very happy to act now in defense of evil and to, you know, face the legal ramifications later if those ever come about. And it is time for Hillsborough to look at what it would mean to take strong, powerful action in defense of our community and then face the legal consequences later, if that's what we have to do. I spent, uh, 10 I spent 10 years practicing law. I'm no longer a lawyer. But, you know, in that time, what I saw is that people get away with a lot that's illegal. And maybe it's time that the people who are on the side of good start pushing the boundaries a little bit and being willing to defend those actions in court if necessary. Because what's happening right now is tearing our community apart. It's dividing neighbor from neighbor and it's unacceptable. And so I thank you for what you've done so far, but I would strongly encourage you to have the moral courage that it requires to do what is necessary at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Val Bakma, you can come up to the desk on the left-hand side. And Jodi, you have, oh, sorry. Selene McKeady is on deck. And Jodi, you have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jodi Arteaga and I have had the pleasure of getting to be involved with our immigrant and refugee community for the past several years. And I am married to an immigrant and I have children that I share with him. And I said to him the other day, I never thought that I would wake up every morning afraid for my family because of our government. I just wanted to remind the law enforcement in Hillsborough, in Washington County, and in Oregon of the law, US Code 18, Section 242, that says, "This law prohibits any person, including federal, state, and local law enforcement officers, from willfully depriving a person of their constitutional or legal rights while acting under the color of the law. This covers a range of misconduct such as excessive force, intentional false arrests, or sexual assault, and can be applied even if the officer acts beyond their lawful authority." Beyond that, I wanted to, I have another thing I wanted to read. It is the, it is the legal duty for local law enforcement to intervene when federal officers use excessive force. This is because of all law enforcement officers have an affirmative duty to intervene and stop misconduct, including constitutional violations like excessive force, especially when they have a realistic opportunity to do so without creating a greater risk. All law enforcement officers, whether local or federal, have an affirmative duty to intervene when they witness another officer using excessive force or violating constitutional rights. The duty to intervene exists when an officer observes or has reason to know that a constitutional right has been violated. Local officers are expected to protect individuals from harm, and this duty extends to protecting them from the misconduct of other officers, including federal agents. I think it's sad that we have to remind the police and the law enforcement in this state what their job is, but we're all standing together as a community trying to take care of each other and we just need you all to do your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jodi. Val, is that you? Val, is that you? Right here? Okay, so one second. Celine or Selene McKeady? Okay, thank you. And then Dirk Knudsen, you are on deck. Val, you have three minutes.
My name is Val Bakma and I've lived in Hillsborough for 35 years. Our community is under assault. US Customs and Border Protection reports that their agents have made more than 560 arrests across the Portland area in the month of October. These agents are heavily armed. In some cases, they display no badges. They usually wear masks and refuse to identify themselves or show any warrants. They have quotas to meet and they don't care whether the people they take are documented, undocumented, or US citizens. In many cases, they're treating people brutally and cruelly, and many of their actions are not, to be clear, legal detainments. No warrant is presented, there's no due process, no access to attorneys, and our legislators with oversight responsibilities are being denied access to the facilities. Residents are trying in every way we can to keep our friends, neighbors, family members from being dragged away, and we are being told that our city leaders and our police cannot, will not keep us safe, will not warn, will not interfere, will not document because federal officers have deemed these activities to be illegal. As you know, laws change. Temporarily protected status has been stripped from hundreds of thousands of immigrants changing their status to illegal based on the government's whim. Attempts have been made to end birthright citizenship. The Supreme Court has lifted the ban on racial profiling, placing a target on every Latino in our community. People who dissent are being labeled as terrorists. But remember, there was also a time in this country when it was illegal to teach black people to read and write. There was a time when it was illegal to help a slave escape from the person whom the law deemed as, recognized as their owner. In 1943, Anne Frank wrote in her diary, "Terrible things are happening outside. At any time of night and day, poor helpless people are being dragged out of their homes. Families are torn apart. Men, women, and children are separated. Children come home from school to find their parents have disappeared. No one that I know excuses the horrors that were perpetrated on vulnerable people throughout history because they were at the time legal. And none of these laws changed because people were compliant. We want our leaders to have integrity, but also courage and compassion and a moral compass that is independent of the administration's whims." And so I am urging the city to reconsider what it can do to protect our communities. In addition to providing grant funding and posting resources on its webpage, the city needs to do more. At the very least, police need to record every immigrant, immigration interaction that they possibly can and maintain a comprehensive database. And they need to reconsider the way they interact with community members who are impacted by ICE because their demeanor is raising the question of whether they are not just compliant with ICE but also complicit.
Thank you, Val.